So do we know whether we've got Ms. Shannon lined up? It's four o'clock and we're basically ready to go. I just want to make sure the next item on the agenda, our presenters are available. I haven't seen this split screen thing before, so. Okay, I see that the CACVB folks are available if we need them. Lucinda, are you there? Do we have the TJPDC program? I just realized if somebody was trying to respond to me orally, that I would not have heard it.
Test.
Mine's working.
Yes.
Does someone have their audio on?
I think so.
I do, and I'm trying to undo it.
Maybe just hold down.
You may go away. Come back again.
Yeah.
No, you could.
I'll start it again, and this time not get that fucking.
There's something that's changed. Christine Jacobs. She may be presenting, I don't know. My understanding is that Lucinda was out.
Well, Sandy Shackelford is out, just having had a baby, but I thought Lucinda was.
Oh, Lucinda, you're right, you're right, you're right. I just messaged Christine.
You want to go ahead and do the CACVB presentation?
Sure. Do you want me to try to call over there?
I'm just trying to send an email to Lucinda. I just have to get back on. I know that the consultants were going to be joining on the call too with TJPDC. Well, it's about ten after. Let's just go ahead and get started, and we'll move on to the CACVB first, and then we can circle back to the transit discussion. So the June 6, 2022 Charlottesville City Council Hybrid Meeting will come to order. Ms. Thomas, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor McGill?
Here.
Counselor Payne?
Here.
Counselor Pinkston?
Here.
Mayor Snook?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Here.
Okay, we have all present. Is there a motion to approve or to amend the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So this meeting will be divided into three sections. First is a work session to hear and discuss presentations that do not require a council vote. Then there will be a closed meeting to discuss a few matters. Then the City Council Regular Business Meeting, which will begin around 6:30, with seating available in council chambers for up to 23 pre-registered attendees and media. So let's start off with our, we're going to rearrange the agenda just slightly, and pick up the report of the Charlottesville Albemarle Convention and Visitors Bureau update. Courtney, are you the presenter?
I am. Thank you so much. Can you all hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Phenomenal. Thank you so much for having me this afternoon, Mayor Snook and the rest of City Council. I'm happy to go through a little bit about what we do. If you have any questions during the presentation, please just feel free to stop me when I'm making my presentation. I won't be able to see you, so just interrupt, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have as I go through. Are you all able to see my presentation?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so I am Courtney Kukashin. I'm the Executive Director of the Charlottesville Albemarle Convention and Visitors Bureau. We are the Visitor Bureau for the City of Charlottesville and Albemarle County. Starting with this county map, the United States, to let you know that there are Convention and Visitors bureaus all over the United States, in practically every city and county, and all over the world as well. So when we're talking about our competition and who else is out there, who we're trying to get here, we are competing with everyone, and I have the honor of being able to tell people about this great community that I represent. The mission is really to enhance the economy, specifically in the tourism industry, and to generate tax revenue for the city and the county. And we reinvest that funding back into the tourism economy to start that funnel again. And our vision for 2025 is to be the most welcoming destination in the southeast. And I think we are working well on our way there, and I'll tell you more about that in the course of the presentation. In October of 2020, we passed a strategic action plan. That was a strategic plan specifically for COVID. I had started that just before. I came on in August of 2019, and we presented research in February of 2020, and obviously needed to do it quite a lot. But these are the values that we determined that we were going to focus on, and we also adopted an equity and inclusivity statement. It is very much my philosophy that if we are not a welcoming bureau, that we can't be a welcoming place. And the whole point of the Visitors Bureau is to welcome everyone here to have a great time and hopefully leave as much money behind as possible. Our strategic imperatives are resiliency, unity, diversity, creativity, and responsibility. And how that translates into strategic imperatives are by driving overnight visitation. That means that we want people to spend the night here. Our Visitor Bureau is funded exclusively by the transient occupancy tax, and a portion of that tax comes to the CACVB, not the entirety of it. But we also occasionally receive grant funding as well. But we focus on a broader mission than just driving overnight visitation. We also seek to increase visitor spending, and that's where our visitor services come in, and I'll talk about those in a little bit. We also develop new visitor opportunities. So we leverage partnerships to help bring partners together so that we're able to showcase our destination in different ways and provide different experiences. And when I talk about partners, I'll show that on a future slide as well, but we mean any business or attraction that is in the tourism space. We also have the opportunity to tell stories that uplift and inspire. And because we're a quasi-governmental agency, we take a lot of responsibility for using our public funds with transparency and efficiency, and I'll tell you more about that as well. I am going to read this slide. I don't usually in my presentations, but this is the elevator pitch that I worked on with my team this spring. We were trying to really boil down what we value as what we bring to the community, and so I'm going to read this one. The CACVB is an innovative, collaborative, and service-oriented destination marketing and management organization that welcomes all visitors to Charlottesville and Albemarle County with the goal of improving the quality of life for residents and supporting a robust tourism ecosystem. This ecosystem is sustained and enhanced through partnerships with all tourism-related businesses and attractions in Charlottesville and Albemarle County. The CACVB is funded through a portion of the lodging tax generated through overnight stays and our wide variety of accommodations. Therefore, welcoming visitors from all backgrounds to stay overnight is the primary mission of our organization. We do that through a number of different ways. Primarily, we are a destination marketing organization, so marketing is a big part of what we do. And that marketing includes advertising, public relations, and sales efforts. We're the storytellers for Charlottesville and Albemarle, and we get to tell people who don't live here what we want them to know about us so that they come to visit. Our visitor services help people before they make it to the destination through telephone and email inquiries, as well as through visitor guide requests. And then they help people when they're here at our mobile visitor centers locations. As I said before, we take a lot of responsibility for being the steward of public funds. And through community support and service, we also take a lot of responsibility to be the subject matter experts on tourism in the community, as well as a resource for marketing and other services for our hospitality and tourism partners. And who are those? We have nine different stakeholder groups. You'll see lodging is in bold, because again, that is where our funding comes from. But we support all of these elements in the community. We have nine full-time staff, including myself, and 15 board directors. Those board directors include the Vice Mayor and Chris Engel from Economic Development. And we also have two positions here bolded. Those positions are vacant at the moment, and applications for those are being accepted through June 10th, so through Friday. And then those nomination will come back to City Council and where it's appropriate to the Board of Supervisors of Albemarle County to approve those positions. We take, we have a great relationship with Economic Development, both in the city and the county, and we spend a lot of time working together to further the goals of the economy and the community. I'm going to run through these next slides pretty quickly, but please feel free to pause me if you have any questions. I'm showing here that our FY 2022 budget, which ends on June 30th, is stronger than the FY 2023 budget, which is the lowest one we've had in a while. Because of that, we had saved fund balance from the peak of COVID, and you'll see that reflected here, so that we were able to carry some of that money over to help bolster us through difficult times. You probably are unaware, but our, the CACVB budget comes from the lodging tax collection from two years in the past. So for FY 2022, we were dealing with March 2020 through June 2020. And now as we start FY 2023 on July 1st, we will be mirroring the transient occupancy tax collection from July of 2020 through June of 2021. We were also the grant recipients through Virginia Tourism Corporation. The city and the county both received grants, and those were passed through in large part to the Convention and Visitors Bureau for us to be able to use collaboratively to help the tourism industry recover. All of this money needed to be used for new initiatives, so it did not replace our baseline budget, but it was able to help us take on some new projects. Because our base budget has been so impacted, and the Virginia Tourism Corporation money wasn't able to be utilized for those things, the county granted us $750,000 starting July 1st out of their ARPA allotment to help recover. I had asked in June of last year for $750,000 from the city and the county, and I have a budget breakdown for if the city is able to match this, where that money would go. This is a further breakdown of our FY 2023 budget, just to let you know where that money goes. In large part, it goes to advertising and marketing, since we're a marketing organization. Just so that you know that we do take our responsibilities very seriously, that we have been able to save a lot of funds through streamlining since I have gotten here just under three years ago. All of those cost savings goes back to promoting the destination, which helps generate further visitation. And so we have made a lot of progress over the past couple of years, especially knowing that COVID was going to impact our budget, to be very smart about how we're using our funds. These are the CACVB's brand pillars. This is where we spend our focus to try and get people here, and our different ways that we talk about our destination in terms of marketing and public relations in particular. One of our biggest public relations challenges, as you can imagine, is Charlottesville's recent history and past history. And so something that we did in that research in winter of 2020 was surveyed prospective and past visitors to Charlottesville. And what we found was the past visitors are on the left-hand side in red. There are almost no negative words in the past visitor experience. However, for the prospective visitors, we do see negative words. And, you know, when we, when I initially got here, I was thinking that as time moved away from the tragic events of August 2017, that those words would become smaller and smaller, and we find ourselves in the position where with the murder of George Floyd, the insurrection, and most recently, the murders in Buffalo, that we're revisiting Charlottesville's legacy. And so a lot of our work has related back to making sure that we are addressing what people know about Charlottesville in the national media, and addressing that head-on with real concrete work, as well as trying to bring more people into the fold within our community. Some of that is through our public relations efforts. So you'll see here a handful of articles that we have generated over the past year. I think these are all within the beginning of 2022. And we also do a lot in marketing and advertising because of the way that we have been able to streamline our marketing efforts and cut waste in our budget. We have been able to get access to national publications we were never able to access before. This has also been really very much helped through the Virginia Tourism Corporation funding as well. So it's a really exciting time for us to be able to, since we're being discussed in the national conversation, address that through our advertising and PR efforts on a national scale. This is just a sample of what we put out there for advertising. It's doing very well. We're very excited to be 40% above the publisher's benchmark, which is extraordinary. Our e-newsletter that came out through Travel and Leisure was also 40% above. So we're getting great engagement, and we're directing people straight to our website when they see our display ads, when they're seeing our print publications, or any other advertising that's out there. You may also be aware that we launched Discover Black Seaville on March 26. This has been after a year of having our social media channels out and active in the community. And about nine months prior to that, so really this got started in August of 2020, with listening conversations with local black tourism professionals in our community. And this is what came from that effort. It was really important to me that we were making sure that our community had buy-in before we launched nationally. And you could tell on lunch day how much community buy-in and positivity had been created by this effort, by the people who showed up for the press conference, and by the partners who engaged with our national media who were here for the entire weekend. There was just so much positivity and so much excitement. And we noticed with the, some of the travel raiders were really hesitant to come here. And by the time they left, they were advocates and totally bought in to why we have such a great place. And then they went back and they shared those articles, and there are a couple of slides from now, which is why I was moving forward. I'll show you that in a minute. We also launched the Discover Black Seaville passport. And that is when you check into five block-owned businesses, you can receive Discover Black Seaville hat, which I'm modeling here in this photo at the Heritage Center. And we created a video about this launch, and I'm going to play that now for you all.
Charlottesville has a complexity that I think I really underestimated before in terms of its history, in terms of the activities that there are to be here, in terms of its great mind and culture.
Charlottesville has impressed me by a long shot. I had no expectations coming in, and I'm so glad that I had the opportunity to visit and explore Black Charlottesville, and meet its people, its business owners, and explore all of its vineyards and woodlands.
I love the scenery and the sunshine, but in terms of things we've done, I also really love visiting Monticello, because being there, seeing it, experiencing it really supplemented everything that I've learned and filled in the gaps of the past.
I lived in Virginia for a few years, so I've heard of Charlottesville. I passed through two years ago for about three days, so I feel like I had a small taste. If you ask me if I knew Charlottesville after this trip, I will say that I did not know Charlottesville in the ways that I know it now.
The most surprising thing to me about Charlottesville is its diversity, as well as its incredible scenery, landscape.
Landscape is amazing. The views are absolutely breathtaking everywhere I've gone.
I don't know, being in Virginia, I just had this idea of what Charlottesville was, kind of this like one-dimensional view of it, a placeholder in history, like it had this, I had this one view of it. And coming here, I'm seeing how complex those ideas are, and how much they change over time, and how dynamic Charlottesville is as a place, and really how nice the people are. Like, it's, it's a very modern city, very art-centered, cultural hub, and I'm, I'm really enjoying it.
My favorite part of the area has definitely been seeing the locals out and about. Everywhere I've gone, I'm like, man, people really, really get out, crowds are mixed, and everyone seems to be having a good time and just enjoying being able to walk around the city and get out, eat, drink wine, visit every, visit all its sites. It's been great.
And like the food and drink, it's, I mean, it's the South, right? Like, I had fried green tomato glass size, and it was amazing. And I'm drinking an excellent rosé here, and, you know, it's not even summer, and I've already got like a peach orange in my hand, nothing's going wrong.
I'm shocked how much I like the food and drink in Charlottesville. I mean, I went to school in Richmond, Virginia, which I think has pretty great food, but Charlottesville has some pretty great chefs. I love the Black-owned businesses. I had Angelique's Fish Bar yesterday, and it did change my life. I am a new person. I love it.
I did not know that it was as big as a foodie city as it is, and I've noticed that you cannot run out of options anywhere you turn. There's a restaurant, a bar, a winery, something for everyone.
There's a lot more to Charlottesville than I had thought initially, and honestly, I wish I would have come here earlier. You should get a Charlottesville.
So these are some of the articles that have been generated from the press coverage from, from that trip. We have a handful more that have come about in the past couple of weeks. But what is great about this is it really speaks to our mission for Discover Black Seaville, which is black people telling stories about, about the place instead of the interpretation that has historically been told, which is, is phenomenal. I'm going to move now into destination sales and give you a little bit of a background into some of the research that we have at the CACVB. You'll see here our hotel occupancy rates. Our, our light blue is 2022, and so we're, we're recovering a bit. Our hotel occupancy is still limited because of our workforce here. While the hospitality industry has really stepped up and provided salary increases much more than they had ever done before, there, we are still not able to, to get the people that we need to do the jobs in, in restaurants and other sectors of the economy as well, but particularly in hotels. And so you're seeing that reflected here. The average daily rates are a counterbalance to that. We have a ton of pent-up demand. Because we never stopped advertising, we're seeing people wanting to come here, which is phenomenal. But we're, we're also seeing the increase in supplies, in the cost of workforce, and, and all of the things that are, are, are related to that in, in the economy right now. So we're not sure where the average daily rates are going to end up, but it's probably fair to say that we're not going to be able to continue to grow that in the long term. Revenue per available room is how much money each hotel room is making, and so that has skirted just above where we usually would be so far in 2022 outside of April. April is a very popular time, and, and this is the first April where we've really been able to come back and have weddings. So we had a lot of pent-up demand there as well. So as things start to slow down, probably at late fall, early winter, we'll, we'll likely see the normalization of the industry. But in the meantime, we're just seeing a lot of people return and, and not be as price-sensitive as they had been before. We use Adara as a, a tool to measure how well our website is doing in getting people here. You'll see below that it says, this is an estimated 43% of our website traffic because pixel, people are moving away from pixels for tracking. We aren't able to capture the entirety of, of the website, and I'll show you on the next slide a little bit more about what this looks like. But this is what we're able to show for sure was here in, in 2021, as things were starting to recover. The average length of stay is pretty typical for Charlottesville and Albemarle County, as is the number of average travelers. However, the average daily rate is well above what we see in market, so the people who are coming to our website are spending more money here on their overnight stays. This is what the enriched data looks like. So Adara has hotel agreements with only certain brands, and so when we are able to combine this, that data with what we know that we have in market for all the rest of the brands and all the rest of their properties that we have here, this is really what the CACVB website alone is bringing to the local economy and actual bookings. So this is not, you know, how much visitor spending we have here, it's not, you know, our home stays, this is just hotel revenue that we're able to track through only our website, not our PR efforts, not the, the advertisements that people see that don't end up with them in, coming to our website, but do end up with them booking. Our sales efforts specifically are to try and attract groups to Charlottesville and Albemarle County. This is a relatively new position. We hired in November of 2020, and we have been able to start working with our local accommodations and event spaces. We go to trade shows, especially student and youth groups, military reunions, and some international business as well, to try and get people here during the midweek when occupancy is lower and prices are lower as well. So through this program, we host familiarization tours so that the planners can come and they can experience what it would be like to bring a group here. And then we put those leads out to our event and tours, our accommodations partners to be able to book that business directly. As in everything else that we do, we partner really closely with the stakeholders, and so in the beginning of 2022, we hosted a sales strategy meeting with our local hotel partners to, to see how things were working and to make adjustments accordingly. For our visitor services, this is our mobile visitor center. This is Exart Park at the farmer's market on Saturday mornings. This is our, one of our most popular locations for the mobile visitor center, and we see a lot of visitors come through every Saturday morning. But our visitor services team doesn't just run the mobile visitor centers, they answer inquiries of all types, in-person, phone calls, emails, website submissions, and they also help residents who are looking for information. We have, we work onsite for special events, and we also do bulk orders, which means if you're having a group come to town, we're able to put together a package for you with visitor guides, maps, and whatever other brochures are relevant to your group so that you can pass those out in bags and have a really nice experience for, for your visitors when they come here. We get that, those inquiries all the time with meetings and weddings. For our mobile visitor center locations, we have all of the stats here on this somewhat complicated chart for you in case you wanted to dive in a little bit more. We just launched in March of 2021, so we're in our second season for the mobile visitor centers, and we've been learning as we go throughout. We were initially at the Wolf Factory, but now we've moved to Cho, to the airport, and we run Wednesdays through Sundays at a city and county location during those days. These are the city sites per month, in case you're interested in diving, again, a little bit more into the patterns of visitation. What I love about being able to be at different locations is that we're able to talk to different types of visitors. You'll see different folks on the downtown mall than at Dairy Market, than at the Art Park, and so, or running along the Rydanna River Trail. And we're able to gather that information, but we're also able to cross-reference people who are running along the trail, how to get downtown, how to get to Berwick's Road, and, and try and connect the dots for folks. So we're really going to where the people are when they're there. This is a little bit of information on the kinds of requests we get at the mobile visitor center by subject. Just in case you were curious, not surprisingly, in 2021, recreation and, and places to play was top, that was a, a travel trend throughout the United States as people were trying to explore outside and, and stay safe. And I'll leave this here for a second. These are some words from our partners on what the mobile visitor center means to them. And then as far as COVID recovery goes, we just, through the Virginia Tourism Corporation ARPA funding, were able to get access to Zartico for two years, for a two-years-long subscription. And we're just starting to mine that data. It has some really great data inside of this dashboard, and I'll be able to share a, a better report with you in, in the coming months as I learn more. But what I thought was interesting about this chart was that through October, we were seeing more day trip visitors than overnight, and then once we got to November, that, that trend has changed. And so we're seeing more and more people spend the night. Day trip visitors are great, you know, they spend money here, we're happy for them, but the overnight visitors are really where we see the, the economic impact, because they stay overnight. They need to eat their meals here, they need something to do, they're going out to the theater, they're, you know, they're taking in different events. And so that's a, a good sign of recovery for our economy as we see that, that ratio shift. This is also really interesting to me, that the, the types of places and activities that visitors are engaged in versus residents. This is one of my favorite things about Zartico's, we're able to see how resident behavior and visitor behavior are different in different spots and within different sectors of the economy. And so, you know, not surprisingly, there are more visitors at our accommodations than residents. But what we're seeing for the arts, for example, are, you know, we're seeing more residents than visitors at, at those kinds of events. So we'll, we'll be mining more of this data, but I just wanted to grab a couple of, of slides to share with you all this afternoon. And that is all I have as far as the presentation goes, but I am happy to answer whatever questions you all might have.
Counselors, have any questions?
Well, I don't have any questions. I just want to just comment as the councilperson that serves on the board is that I've been to, you know, since I've been on council, what, six months now, several meetings, and it's just a very diverse board, it covers a lot of different areas. I know we have some openings up for some, some different categories, but, you know, it's a place where, you know, you see the city and the county and different industries chiming in to, you know, provide input on how we can promote this area, so it's a, you know, it's, seems to be a really good board, and so I look forward to going to those meetings.
It looks like it. Looks like y'all are having fun.
I thought you were going to be demanding royalties for your, for your appearance in that video.
So just quickly about that, you know, I was just going to the farmer's market, and there was really a lot of activity going on that particular day. It was the kickoff of the, the African, the, the, what, what do we call it again, Courtney?
Discover Black Seaville.
Discover Black Seaville, and it was a room full of, you know, writers from different newspapers, and, you know, I love meeting new people, so it didn't take much for me to get in there, talk to them. So it was great, it was just a perfect weekend, and as far as the weather, the activity was smelling good outside with the different food, so I, I hope they enjoyed it. It looked like they, they did, so anyway.
Yeah, I really appreciated your presentation. I did have a couple of quick questions for you. It was interesting to me, I'm, I grew up in southwest Georgia, so when I see people or see this area listed as part of the southeast as opposed to the mid-Atlantic, is there a reason, I mean, that's a, this completely like trite thing, but are we marketed? Is that like a certain way that we're marketed in terms of the region we appeal to? Is that why southeast was on the cover document as opposed to mid-Atlantic?
Sure. And so what I've noticed is, is that is the case. People put Virginia in different buckets, but we are members of Southeast Tourism Society, and so as far as the, the tourism space goes in a regional perspective, that's the bucket that they put us into.
Got it, thank you. And what is your board's relationship to the Virginia Tourism Corporation, I guess the larger entity?
So Virginia Tourism Corporation does what we do as a state.
Okay.
So we receive grant funding from them occasionally, and we like to, you know, know what they're doing and vice versa. We support one another in our activities, but the governance is, is completely different, you know, like the, the governor's office to city council, right?
Got it, got it, got it. And then in your website tracking, which was very slick and sophisticated, do you also pick up like Airbnb-type arrangements, things that don't go through what I guess used to be considered normal hoteling? Or, you know, the Stay Seaville or things like that? Does it pick up those kinds of activities?
Adara does not, no. There are additional, there, there's lots of research that you can buy in the tourism space, and trying to buy research that gives us the biggest bang for our buck without spending most of our money on research that we couldn't end up using to, to buy more advertising. We have to draw the line somewhere.
Sure.
But Adara just tracks the, the hotel brands that they have a relationship with, which excludes Airbnb and Stay Charlottesville.
So the numbers would be higher, is what?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And is there a specific, I mean, for people that come to our city, is there, or the region, is there like a common request that people have that they wish would be fulfilled, or is there some sort of thing that maybe y'all could point to, like things that we could do better? If that makes any sense?
I mean, I think, you know, getting people around with signage, I mean, our, our signage for the visitor center that used to be the transit center is still up, and I know that that creates some confusion. You know, trying to attract a workforce here that will help us fill out the, the rest of our hospitality industry businesses is huge. We've been bringing in visitors on, on Sunday, Mondays, and trying to feed them downtown is, is a hard thing to do. And I totally sympathize with our restaurants for not being open at, you know, seven days a week for three meals a day, but it does make it difficult when visitors are here to, to be able to have those experiences if, if places aren't open. And it ends up supporting chain restaurants as opposed to locally owned restaurants for that reason, because they're able to have the support to be open more of the time. And then, you know, we've also seen some transportation issues, especially, you know, coming out of COVID, you know, connectivity between the airport and the rest of the county and the city is difficult. You know, trying to get a, an Uber to come back from a winery can be challenging, so, you know, I think workforce is the biggest issue that's facing the, the tourism industry right now, and it's not just in Charlottesville, it's everywhere. But that's, that's the biggest area where we could really have an impact if we were able to figure that out better.
Great, thank you so much.
Just one question. I read in recent months that the state had allocated additional money to tourism boards. Is that money reflected in what you listed as your ARPA money, or is that a source of funds that you haven't yet received?
So that was the VTC ARPA funding slide that I showed you. The, the city was the grant recipient, but then they passed through most of that funding to the CACVB. $20,000 was used for downtown mall lighting. But that, the money didn't come directly to the tourism boards. The intent was for it to come to the tourism boards, but the localities themselves were the grant recipients.
Is there additional money that will be coming directly to tourism boards after this upcoming state budget was signed, or am I just confusing that with the money that you'd already received with the city as the pass-through?
Yeah, there, there isn't additional funding.
Okay. That said, I mean, the two biggest questions I've had have been about, one, the efficiency and quality of work. In the past, we've gotten from contracting out some of the design and advertising, as well as what day well as what data that we're using to measure the impact or efficiency of any investments we make. And both those questions were answered in your presentation. And I think that data and the Discover Black Seaville initiative and the efficiencies of doing things more in-house, to me, all seem like very positive changes over the past several years, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Santa, here you go.
No, I think most everything's been answered. I really am. I mean, I like what you're doing with the Discover Black Charlottesville very much. Are you being careful about the companies? When I noticed on the website, we have a number of, like, a whole page about vacation rentals and making sure that those are actually legal rentals for Airbnb?
We don't have access to whether or not they're legal. So, if the city or the county would like to partner with us? I'm sorry?
Are you having the companies signing an agreement saying that they verify that these are legal and zoning legal rentals?
We are not doing that. I don't know if that is something we are able to do. But I can get with the staff of the city and see if we're able to, to figure out the best way to move forward on that. I'm certainly, if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, we don't want to feature them on our website.
Yeah, I just, I just, I push on that because if we're, if the city is paying a large chunk of money and then we are providing advertising space for companies who are breaking our zoning laws and impinging upon our affordable housing stock.
Typically not paying the taxes either.
Yeah. I, I have some issues with that. So, and it's just an area that's a very, it can be, I could see where this could have slipped through cracks because everyone thinks everybody else is supposed to be checking up on it. But it's, it's kind of a pet peeve of mine. So, I just want to make sure that we're looking at that in all sorts of different places.
I'll follow up with city staff and the zoning department and see the best way to move forward and let you know.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't really have any questions. I mean, one of the advantages of going last in all of this is that all the other questions get asked or all the other points get made. I, I think that the, the Discover Black Seaville is, is an intriguing thing for a whole lot of reasons, only one of which is that it helps very directly to confront some of the sort of the mythology, I suppose you might almost say, about Charlottesville. And it also gives us an opportunity to change our own reality. And it's sometimes that opportunity to change the reality is, is all that we've, is all that we've needed. So, I applaud those efforts. I'm glad they, I'm glad it worked well to begin with. Let's hope that it persists. And thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you. And please don't hesitate to reach out if you have any more questions. I'm, I'm happy to help anytime.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Boyd.
Thanks, Courtney.
Okay.
So, our next presenter is going to be the, the transit piece and Lucinda Shannon and perhaps others. Do we have Lucinda and perhaps others?
Others here.
Yes.
Okay, there are some others. And Lucinda.
Yes.
Fire away.
I'd like to apologize. I'd like to apologize, Mayor Snook and the council members, and also to the city staff for the connection technology errors. I'm Lucinda Shannon. I'm a senior regional planner with the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission and the project manager for the Transit Vision Plan. We'd like to thank Charlottesville for supporting this Transit Vision Plan. And today, we have Tim Bruhl from AECom and Scudder Wag with Jarrett Walker and Associates to provide you a project update. I'm going to turn it over to Tim.
Thanks, Lucinda. And thank you to the, the council members for having our, our team present today for an update on the Regional Transit Vision Plan for the Charlottesville area. I will go ahead and share my screen, so bear with me. And we have a presentation. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, as an agenda, we'll kind of go through the, the background of where we've been. Sorry, first off, my name is Tim Bruhl. I'm a transportation planner and project manager, AECom, and I'm, I'm based out of Arlington, Virginia. Today, joining me is Scudder Wag from Jarrett Walker and Associates. So, back to our agenda. We'll go over the background of where we've been and what work remains. We'll have a brief discussion on the Transit Vision Statement Goals and Objectives. And then, the bulk of our presentation will go over the, the different vision concepts we have prepared for, for regional transit in Charlottesville. And we'll wrap up with a discussion on our Phase Two Engagement Strategy, on how we're going to be reaching out to various stakeholders and the public moving forward into the summer. And then, we'll have an opportunity for question and answer. So, the, the projects started last October. And this was a collaborative effort to evaluate and establish a clear, long-term vision for transit service in the region. The project is led by the TJPDC and funded in part by DRPT and the local jurisdictions. As you can see on the process, process graphic below, we are approaching the end of our project where we have developed our draft network concepts and are soliciting input and evaluating the outcomes. The project website is the best place to find information on the study, including our intermediate work products to date, as well as information on upcoming engagement efforts, including our survey and upcoming public meeting. And the, the link to our project website is, is listed there. We are anticipating finalizing the study by late summer, so August, September, 2022. So, I do want to make a distinction between our study, which is the Vision, Transit Vision Study, with the upcoming Transit Governance Study. The Transit Vision Study will conclude this summer, just as the Transit Governance Study commences. The focus of the Transit Vision Study is identifying those potential improvements and network to the regional transit system. And the focus of the Transit Governance Study is, so the governance of that regional transit, including potentially a regional transit authority that can collect additional dedicated revenue for transit. Basically, studying how we could implement and, and operate the, the vision that we've defined as part of the study. One of the, one of our immediate work products was to develop a vision statement for transit in the region. And this was a public and stakeholder-led effort to identify those transit and community priorities and goals for the region. We, during our conversations with the public and also the RTP, we, we came up, some main themes sort of bubbled up, those being equity. And we define that as expanding opportunities for residents and represents the needs of both urban and rural communities. Multimodality, meaning reduced reliance on automobiles, including improving the effectiveness and utility of the transit network, considering transit supportive land uses and other multimodal solutions, including bicycle and pedestrian connections to transit, intercity rail, et cetera. And finally, climate change, helping protect the environment, reducing greenhouse gas emissions from the transportation sector. So, this, we did provide a, the draft Transit Vision Statement Goals, Objectives, and Measures Technical Memo. And that's included in the packet for today's meeting for your review. Any detailed comments can be passed along to the study team for consideration as we finalize the vision plan. Within that, within that, that document and, and provided here on the presentation highlighted is our proposed vision statement and as reads as follows. Develop, design, and provide transit in the Charlottesville area in a manner that reflects a collaborative, inclusive, and equitable process, representing needs in both urban and rural areas. This transit system expands opportunities for all residents, equity, reduces reliance on automobiles, multimodality, and helps protect the environment, climate change mitigation. And with that, I will pass it on to Scudder to go over our different vision concepts.
Thanks, Tim. Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be with you all today. I'm Scudder Wag with Jarrett Walker and Associates, also based in Arlington, Virginia. And we have been helping the team with the service planning elements of this process. And we have to present to you as part of this two vision concepts that show a range of possibilities of what new regional funding and expanded service might achieve for the region. The constrained vision that we'll show you is built around assumptions about what a possible expanded network looks like, assuming regional funding sources, similar to the levels of resources that come from the Central Virginia Transportation Authority example of sales and fuels taxes that they use to fund their transportation authority. In this case, we've applied similar assumptions and then assumed almost all of that funding would go towards transit, which would be about $26 million in regional funding if we applied similar funding streams to this region. And assume that most of those dollars replace the local funding that's coming from general funds from you and other localities in the region alongside the continuing streams of funding from federal and state sources, which is about nine and a half million dollars a year currently. And that would put a budget of nearly $36 million a year in current year dollars to fund a transit network compared to in pre-pandemic, so fiscal year 2019, for example. CAT and Jaunt combined spent about nineteen and a half million dollars operating transit service in the region. And I want to emphasize the operating cost because that is, that is the, the primary cost of transit, is operating service day in and day out, paying operators, maintenance staff to, to keep the service running. The second part of the vision, the second piece we'll talk about is the unconstrained vision, which is a network that shows what could it look like if you built a system that was really trying to meet your land use, climate, economic development, and lots of other goals that you have for your communities. And so, this vision had no constraint, no specific defined limit on, when we were drawing it up along with staff and representatives from, from various jurisdictions. And we estimate that the total cost of running that network would be about $70 million per year, to give you some sense of the scale. Next slide. So, I'm going to talk about some outcomes first. And one of the ways we can measure outcomes is by looking at how many people have access to some different kinds of transit service. So, this bar chart is showing you residents and jobs that are near transit service of different kinds, different frequency. And I will emphasize frequency regularly when we're talking about transit because frequency is so key to the usefulness of service. The more frequent a service is, the more likely it is to be really useful to go where you want because you don't have to wait very long for it to show up. And it makes it much easier to transfer between services. So, these bar charts show you that in today's network, or what we call the baseline network, actually, the network that will be, that will exist as of next year, about eight percent of residents and about 12% of jobs are near service that comes every 10 minutes or better. There are, in total, about 60% of residents in the urbanized MPO area. And it's important to note here that, that these bar charts represent, have access to some kind of transit service. If we add up all of these bars of 10-minute, 15-minute, 20-minute in purple, 30-minute in, in blue, and so on, you get 60% of residents and about 72% of jobs. And we can look at low-income residents, we can look at households without cars and see how they compare in the next, the constrained vision. And in the constrained vision, you see that a lot more people have access to 15-minute service and 20-minute service. And there's a bit of an increase in the percent of people and jobs covered in the constrained network. And this tells us that, in particular, with the improvements in people who have access to 15-minute service and 20-minute service, that you would have a significant increase in the usefulness and the ability of people to access places. And for a variety of people, in particular, households without cars, low-income residents and residents of color, you see those percentages go up a good bit, which is a way of saying that we're trying to put the resources in in more equitable fashion or as a more equitable network. Next slide. If we look at these same comparisons to the unconstrained network, you see that dark red part of the bar chart on the right grow up dramatically because the unconstrained network has a, a much higher level of investment. You get far more people and jobs that have access to 10-minute service or 15-minute service, which are very useful services, the kinds of services that you don't even have to think about a schedule anymore and where it's extremely easy to transfer and get places and with much shorter waits. So, the unconstrained network has an enormous improvement in access because of that increase in frequency. Next. So, we can visualize this kind of increase in access by using these maps we, we call a wall around your life. So, this, this gray blob on this map is how far you can go in 45 minutes from First Street South at Langford Avenue, down the Ridge Street neighborhood, near Mount Zion Church. And as you see, you can't get really that far in 45 minutes. You can reach about 29,000 jobs and about 32,000 residents in 45 minutes. And this counts waiting time, your time riding in the vehicle, your time to transfer, your time to walk after you get off the vehicle. So, it accounts for all of those as, potential aspects of your travel time. Next. In the constrained network, because we've improved frequency, we've improved some things in the network, you can get a good bit farther and reach more of the city, more of the region. And it's 34% more jobs that you can reach and about 50% more residents that you can reach. And both of these are really useful measures because if you live there, you could reach 34% more jobs, which might be jobs you want to compete for to work at. Or they also represent, you know, places you might want to go for other reasons. There's a whole lot of jobs at hospitals that represent medical services you might want to go to, lots of jobs at shopping centers that represent the shopping destinations and retail services you might want to reach. So, it's a, it's a good measure of the potential overall increase in your freedom and access to all the things you might want in life. And the access to increased residence is useful for, for thinking about workforce. If you had a business here, how many more employees could reach you? How many more customers could reach you? And that tells you a lot about how transit can improve the usefulness of a place from, from that perspective. Next slide. The unconstrained network from the same location, because we have a really big increase in service and a really big increase in frequency, you see really big increases in the potential to reach jobs and residents across the region. So, now, this green blob representing where you could go in the unconstrained network gets much bigger. And that's 122% increase in jobs and 140% increase in residents reachable. Next. So, we can effectively create a heat map. Oh, yes. Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, is there a reason, if you go back to the last three slides? Okay, so, 45 minutes and then if you go to the next one, 45. And then, with the unconstrained, you have an hour. Was there a reason for that?
Oh, I apologize. That should have been a 45-minute version. And the, we have, we have more of these examples that we can provide for different areas as well. So, my apologies that that should have been a 45-minute. And I think that might- So my apologies that that should have been a 45-minute, and I think that might have just been a, an error in the output of the, the, the number of minutes there presented in the text.
Okay, so you're, you're thinking that the slide we're looking at is a 45-minute slide?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. So we can do a similar assessment of this change across all different parts of the city and the region and produce an effective heat map of that change. The darker green areas showing increases, the darker the green, the greater the increase in job access. The pink actually a small decrease in the constrained network, for example, there's a few bits and, and nooks and crannies where some changes may mean a small decrease, but by and large, there's a vast improvement across most of the city and, and the urbanized parts of the region. Next slide. And the unconstrained network, you see with the large investment, a sea of green of improvement in job access across large parts, almost all of the city of Charlottesville, and large parts of the developed areas in Albemarle County that arise from the significant improvements in frequency and additions and extensions of routes. Next slide. And we can give you then, you know, a summary of what does this mean for the average person? So if we, we take that, that green and, and on the map, and we effectively multiply it by the number of people within each of those areas, and, and then compare it, we can, we can tell you, for example, that in the constrained network, for the average person trying to travel in the middle of the day on a weekday, they would be able to reach about 12% more jobs in, in 60 minutes overall, in this case. The red bar is 30 minutes, the, the blue bar is 45 minutes, the green bar is 60 minutes, how many jobs you could reach. And at 60 minutes, you could reach 12% more than you could in today's network. The unconstrained vision, the middle chart there, is showing you a 57% increase in jobs reachable in, in an hour, on average, for the average person across the, the urbanized area of Charlottesville and Albemarle. Next slide. So just a quick tour of what is, it's in these networks. These maps are in our draft framework memo. These are maps of the existing networks within the urbanized area on the left and across the entire region of our study area on the right. Again, color-coded by frequency of service, which is always critical to describing the usefulness of service to people. And the thing I'll highlight in the urbanized area network, you see a lot of that pale blue color, and that pale blue color means service every 60 minutes. And relying on service every 60 minutes is extremely hard. You can think about relying on a 60-minute route as a little bit like if they were gated at the end of your driveway that only opened once an hour. And you had best be in your car with your coffee, ready to go at 7:00 AM if you needed to get out at 7:00 AM to get to work. And if you miss it, then you're not leaving until 8:00. That is obviously a very difficult schedule to live your life around. And that is the experience of a lot of folks in Charlottesville and Albemarle with the current frequency of service. The dark blue shows you 30-minute service, and most of the higher frequency services are actually circulators in and around the university and the trolley. Next slide. The vision network includes significant expansions of, of service across the region, including some fixed route all-day services to surrounding regional jurisdictions, Louisa Nelson, among others. And within the urbanized area, a significant improvement in frequency and, and access. And you see a number of red routes now in many corridors, Fifth Street, Avon, going through the grounds, as well as dark red every 10-minute services going through the grounds to Fontaine Business Park and going up the US-29 corridor, for example, bringing much more frequent service to many people and many jobs. And then many other, most other corridors in the urbanized parts of Charlottesville and Albemarle are every 30 minutes in this unconstrained network, meaning much better service for, for many people. And you also see the yellow-colored zones indicating on-demand services highlighted in Pantops and in 29 North, north of Fashion Square Mall, for example, and in a few of the outlying communities like in Esmont Scottsville, for example. Next slide. The constrained vision network, because it is constrained to a much smaller budget than the unconstrained vision, has a significantly less investment, relatively speaking. So on the left is the fixed route network recommendation in the, in the constrained vision network. And here you see fewer red lines than you do in the unconstrained network. So there's 15-minute service on Avon but not on Fifth, for example. There's 15-minute service on High Street as opposed to 10-minute service in the unconstrained vision, for example. And the US-29 service going up Route 7 is every 20 minutes instead of every 10 minutes, for example, because of the much more constrained budget in this, in this network. It is still a significant improvement, and you see a number of other corridors and routes where service is every 30 minutes instead of every 60 minutes, but not all the corridors in, in the city and the developed areas like in the unconstrained vision. Next slide. One of the things that does not quite come through in some of the earlier analysis outputs that I showed you that I want to really emphasize as an important aspect of the constrained vision is a significant improvement in span of service, meaning the hours that service runs and days of the week. And so this is a chart that we call a span of service chart that shows you the frequency of service by time of day. On the left is weekday, in the middle is Saturday, and on the right is Sunday. And this is your baseline network, and it's, one of the things that stands out in this that I want to highlight is there are only five routes that run on Sunday in the existing or baseline network. And many routes do not run very late into the evening, many of them in by 8:00 or 9:00 PM on Saturday and weekdays, which is obviously very limiting for people who work evening and night shifts at hospital, who work at restaurants, who work at hotels. Next slide. The constrained vision network includes a significant investment in later hours of service and Sunday service, so that many more people could consistently rely on that service seven days a week. And in our experience working across the country, these kinds of investments have enormous payoffs, because the, there are many people out there today who are driving to work because they work a kind of job where they need to be able to get home at 9:00 or 10:00 PM. And if you're not there for them, like you aren't now on many of your routes, they're going to have to have a car, even if they can barely afford it. And so seven-day-a-week service, later evening service, we have found to be an enormous benefit for many low-income workers and generally is a significant, significantly positive investment, long-term and higher ridership.
Could you please go back to the, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
The slide just before, please?
Sure. So this is the, the baseline or roughly the existing network, the network that would, would be there in next year.
Okay, thank you.
So that concludes kind of the overview of the, the draft networks, and we are now taking these to the public to get feedback, to revise and update, and Tim will tell you a little more about that.
Yeah, thanks, Scudder. Yeah, so we are entering our Phase 2 of engagement, and so during this phase, we are confirming the draft vision and concepts that we just presented to you. We're exploring long-term transit alternatives for the region and, you know, collecting preferences on scenarios and other future needs. June will be a very busy month for us. We are presenting to the local elected bodies, including, you know, right now to the, to the city of Charlottesville, but, you know, we've already presented to Albeville County Board of Supervisors, and we are also reaching out and presenting to the local rural jurisdictions surrounding the urbanized area. On June 9th, we will launch our survey, and that will be available online and with hard copy distribution at the Transit Center, and that will be a date to be determined. But the goal will be to engage and interact with the existing riders of transit there. Also on June 9th, we will provide a significant update to the project website, kind of introducing these concepts, and, and having the, the website available as a sort of clearinghouse for information and avenue for our, the survey. During the, the June 13th week, we are holding some focus group discussions with community leaders and other community groups with, that have special interests and, and that pertain to transit in the region. And towards the end of the month, on June 23rd, we'll be holding our second and final virtual public open house event. And I say second, we had a, a public house event, a public open house event earlier in the study in October, and so this is a, a revisit to the, the public at that point. During July, we'll be completing those local presentations that I talked about and providing another update to the project website with a summary of our Phase 2 engagement activities that happened in June. In August, we'll hold our final meeting with the RTP to present the complete, completed plan and to wrap up the study at that point. And with that, we are, we'll be happy to entertain some, some questions. I will stop sharing my screen.
Thank you. Start down at this end.
Yes, I was fortunate enough to see this presentation with, on the RTP, so thank you. I hadn't really picked up on the fact that the constrained, even the constrained vision shifted shifts, so to speak, in, till later in the night, later in the evening, and also on the weekends, so that, that was good. Are you able to say sort of, if we were to go with the constrained vision versus the unconstrained, what sort of cities or regions this might put us into a comparable class with? In other words, I know that those are really kind of hard things to compare, there's always, apples-to-apples comparisons like that are difficult, but could you say, for instance, if we went to something like the constrained vision, that would be similar to what Richmond has, or is it too different, of, too many differences between those two places, or say to Charlotte, or to Asheville, or someplace like that? Is there a way you could, some sort of way you could frame where we are now versus maybe comparable city like Greensboro? I don't know.
We could. I don't have the numbers in front of me to say with a high degree of certainty how comparable they might be to other places with, say, the constrained network or the unconstrained network. I would generally say that you all, we've, we've been working a good bit in Chapel Hill recently, and my impression is that the constrained network would get you some, something closer to, to where Chapel Hill is now and their overall level of service, just based on my impressions of, of what they run. And, you know, they're a somewhat comparable place in terms of being a major university town with a lot of other activities as well. So that's, at a high level, a kind of impression of, kind of on a per capita basis, you know, where it might lead you to. And if you went in the unconstrained direction, then you would certainly be much above them in a, in a kind of per capita service levels, and I, which I think could prove very useful, because there are a whole lot of unmet needs in Chapel Hill that we, we found as we've been working with them.
Right. That's, that's very helpful. Thank you. I guess the second question I have is, you know, the Field of Dreams question, if we build it, will people use it? You know, I was talking to someone in the transit arena a few, maybe two months ago, and this individual said, you know, it's great to have these, these, this would be a great system to enact, but how do we change behavior such that people would use it? I mean, I, I think the unconstrained vision is fantastic. How would we, and this is not a question to be answered tonight, but just wonder what your initial reaction is to that point? I mean, in a culture and society so used to, to car-based, personal vehicle-based travel, any thoughts about that?
Sure. I mean, the, a major reason people don't take transit today is because it's very unlikely to be useful for the trip they want to make. You know, the, the, if you go and plug in a trip today in Google Maps and ask the question, you know, can I get from Pantops to, or, you know, Community College? You're going to get a trip that will take you an extremely long time.
Right.
And the, the, the fundamental basis of changing that dynamic of will someone choose to ride is making it far more likely that the trip they, they look up will be reasonably competitive to take transit. Now, that doesn't mean every trip from every possible origin and destination should be incredibly easy to take transit with, because that's very, very hard and very expensive to do. But your, your most dense and active places in your community, if you tie them together with frequent and useful transit, that will make it far more likely that transit will be useful for someone's trip, and that's the, that's the baseline foundation for making it, it more likely that people will ride transit. There's a whole range of other things that you can do on the streetscape, on the land use development side as well, to make it more likely that people will, will choose transit. But if it's, if it, we like to say, you can't take a bus that's not there.
Right.
And that's the foundation.
So, so we just have like five minutes left, so I just wanted to kind of make a comment, and I, I know probably can't be answered. From doing planning, transportation planning for the county for 20 years, I'm glad to see this project. This information is something that we have been yearning for, for a long time, so I'm glad it's being done. I am, you know, kind of going to what Brian said, as far as the information that, for, what I'm seeing is from the process of getting input, that that may have a big say in the, the usability of it, because I, from what I've seen from the plan is from the focus group, I didn't hear who was going to be in the focus group, but the, the virtual kind of hearing and the, the survey sheets, I'm just afraid that you may get just input from the same people, and we kind of know what it is. I mean, if you're not going to go out into the community to ask people authentically who may use it, how, you know, what do you want to see? You know, we're going to get, you know, I, I, I'm not sure, I'm not going to sure about the, the end result. I'm not, I don't see anything innovative here as far as getting input, it's just like we're going to put up a survey, let people respond, and if they don't, you know, so I just, I would like to see, and I know it may be kind of late in the game, a little bit of extra effort on getting input. Maybe the focus group will do that, so, and, and so I'm, that's just my spiel I'm saying to a lot of now that I'm in this position now, being on the other end for many, many years, that we got to do a better job of getting input. We, we just, I can tell you if this all you're going to do, I can almost assure you what we're going to get, because we've been getting emails on everyone already. So secondly, that a lot of information as far as really thinking outside the box as far as providing transit or some type of service for those who work overnight and need childcare, and we may not need a, a whole big bus or van or whatever just for one or two persons to get off. Maybe if we can look at some innovative service like a car service or something like that that's been vetted and they feel safe, that they can call that one person to come pick them up, like, like a taxi cab or something like that, instead of like having a whole big bus on ready for someone who might get off at 3:00. I think when I was doing this, UVA Hospital alone had 30-some shifts, you know, and so you can't really pin, you know, one or two, you may be able to pin one or two, but it's a lot of different shifts, and so, so public input, we got to kind of think about how we're going to approach that, or I'm going to have a lot of e-b-g-bs about the results. That's technical, so, thank you.
The, the technical term. Thank you. You planners, you, you use this fancy language. This end?
Sure, I'll just make a, a few comments. I attended the, the earlier presentation, I think, last week at the RTP, and we'll just share again some of the comments I had then. One, I wonder if it may be worth explicitly including bus drivers in some way in this plan or the vision of it, because we can drop any plans or changes we want, but if we don't have sufficient drivers to run those routes, it won't work, and I know that we're all And I know that we're already seeing significant problems in being able to even maintain frequency of our current routes because of a shortage of bus drivers. The second is, I think at last week's meeting, the Executive Director of Jont made some really important points. Can't remember all the details, but to the effect of, should this plan really focus not just on route frequency, but the travel time of the route, particularly in the context of our density and the population of our metropolitan area, whether, also frequency being important, but the total time it takes to go on that route really being critical to having routes that people end up taking and work. The third, I would echo Vice Mayor Wade's point. You know, you look at the survey, it's very unrepresentative of what the actual ridership of CAT is, based on my understanding. I think like the overwhelmingly, the average income was like almost $200,000 in this survey. And how do we, if we're making decisions, how to ensure that it's including people who are already using the system and who are going to rely on the system for their employment and day-to-day travel? And the final point, just sort of, how do we? I do think that the model of the unconstrained vision should be our goal. But how do we sort of, once this is finalized, bring it back down to earth and figure out what are the level of investments we need to specifically plan for here in the city? And what are the specific steps needed to start to get Jont, CAT, and UVA Transit Services working together and moving to that regional transit authority? Because I think even reading this, you know, it, it won't work without a regional transit authority. And so how do we bring it back down to earth and figure out in specifics what the next steps are? But those are my general comments.
My comments have already been spoken, so I'm good.
The only comment that I wanted to add, again, I, I heard the presentation last week as well, is that I think that, that one place that I, I want to make sure we, we tap into for their, their advice on this is, is major employers. Because we, I, I, I think that where, wherever the bus service can be of great assistance is for helping people get to 6:00 AM jobs at UVA or Centerra or places like that. There are some major, major employers. And if we can figure out a way to make sure that they feel like they are partners in this effort as well, then, then we may have greater luck moving forward in, in getting everybody to, one thing, getting, getting people to, to have the, the bus schedules and the work schedules somewhat aligned. That was my only thought, and as I've, I've had my other comments made at various other meetings, so I won't, won't belabor them at this point. Is there, I, I suppose, the first question, we've, we've, we've said our piece. Is there anything you all want to say back? Or just you're storing this away and moving on to the next step?
I, I would just say, I think we, yeah, we've heard some of the, these from the RTP meeting last week. We appreciate the continued feedback. And as this is a draft plan, there's still work to do.
Yep. I would just say, I, I have said for a long time that Charlottesville needs to think of itself as a city and not as a town. And part of being a city is to have a meaningful transit system. And the unconstrained model is, is beginning to look like a real transit system. So I hope we can figure out a way to get to that point. Okay, that is, thank you so much for your presentation and for bearing with us as, as we shuffled, shuffled things around a little bit. That's it for our. Do we have anything? Okay, that's it for our, our four o'clock docket. Is there a motion now to go into closed session? I know we have one.
I got it. Pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Virginia Code, I hereby move that the City Council close this open meeting and convene within a closed meeting as authorized by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 and A8 for consideration of future appointments by Council to the City's Planning Commission and other boards and commissions and legal consultation regarding compliance with the requirements of VA Code 15.2-2212 and City Council Ordinance and Resolutions.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Let's see, this.
We have a different link coming back.
Right. Okay, so this one we can just do by voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. City Council will now, now go into closed session and will return to, I guess it's to a new link at 6:30. So anybody watching, we'll see you in an hour.